Come in and lead us in pledge allegiance, tell us a little bit about your career at the end of the pledge. We are honored to have him this morning. It's just a small way that we can say thank you, men and women that have served and are serving this great nation, and I was involved in playing advocate this morning. I'm going to ask Commissioner Robinson to lead us in an invitation.
Let us pray. Dear God, Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for all the days that you blessed us with. Go with each of us, guide those who need your guidance each and every day. Protect us, protect those in harm's way. We thank you for those who are willing to take risks and serve in all capacities of life. We thank you for those who are willing to do the work to bring your word to fruition. We thank you for providing us our guidance and directing us in the decisions that are most pleasing to you. Please protect us, please protect all those in harm's way. We thank you for this day and each and every day, and...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, just don't worry, people will come in if you do something.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do not you may be seated.
Today is a wonderful day for me because he talks about the foundation of my life and how it began. I joined the Navy when I was seventeen, because one of the guys at my high school walked up to him, and I said, "How come people don't pick on you?" He said, "Don't pick on me because I write poetry." And I said, "What, some kind of strange guy?" And he said, "No, he said, I write poetry." And I said, "What are you doing now?" He said, "I joined the Army." I said, "Really?" He said, "I'm shipping out as soon as I can." He was eighteen, I was seventeen. And he inspired me, so he told me to go home and start writing down how I felt, and it really touched my heart. And my father took me to, I mean, the Marines would not take me in, the Army would take me because of what I put it. I asked my dad if he would go with me to the Navy recruiter. We went, they asked if I could swim, and I said, "Sure can." They said, "Got you." So they signed me up when I was seventeen. In my junior year, they sent me to boot camp, then I came home, then after my senior year, and during my senior year, my brother, who was aboard a ship called Elizabeth Bronstein, it's E.E., destroyer escort. And when I graduated high school, my mom and dad decided they wanted me to Florida. So we moved, I moved to Florida, and when I was there, my brother called home from his ship, and he was having agonizing pain, and it was emotional. And I turned to my mom and dad, and I said, "I need to make a decision here." And I said, "I'm going to Miami where my commander is," and the Navy recruiter, and I went down there, and I said, "Sir, can you get the address of the place where you want to go?" I said, "Aboard destroyer escort DE 1037." He was a fine time. He said, "Can you want to do that?" I said, "Sure do, sir." He said, "Okay." Couple weeks later, he called me on the phone, and he said, "You got your orders." I said, "Thank God." So I got my orders, went out to San Diego where the ship was, and once I started coming across the gangway in a salute flag, and they said, "Come on, it's even moving." I walked across, and somebody said something really nasty, and I knew then that my brother had issues. And I've always taken care of my brother, even though he was older. And I said, "I'm going to handle this." Well, a couple days later, they put me in the mess tents, the work, doing food and stuff, and then I was told, "Hey, we need somebody in radar." I said, "Really? Would you like the job?" I said, "Sure would." So they put me in the radar department, and I was taught how to do radar, and that's where my brother was. And I said, "This is, you're kidding me. No one has questioned why I'm there or my name because..." How many bogages do you know? So, you know, thinking about the Salton Act, you know, in World War II, all five brothers died, and then they said, "We ban having family members together on the same ship." Well, I got mine, and I left a copy, a picture that was commissioned, and this is the book. This was our trip to Vietnam. When I left for Vietnam, it shows our tour, and the album, and in it is my picture with my brother, and with our names underneath, which identifies who we are. So we made a piece of history here. And in our tour to Vietnam, I took all my brother's problem and I solved it. And when we came back from our tour, I went to my camp, and I said, "Sir," I said, "We didn't do our job." He said, "What do you mean, you didn't do your job?" I said, "We've got people dying in Vietnam, and we're not having a problem, you know, because we're watching under that character and stuff." And I said, "I wanted to go in country." He said, "You could praise this, but it could prove that I still wanted to go in country." I was almost nineteen at the time. And he said, "Okay." So he put in orders, a couple weeks later, I got my orders, they sent me to Camp Pendleton, Camp, they sent me to Cordon Island for ANFID training, and then they sent me to Whitby Islands, they lost me, for SEAL training. And at that time, when I was SEAL training, one of my partners, Bedwist, we got along great, we flew to Vietnam together. And when we flew to Vietnam, I wrote this, and when I was done, I shared this with, I shared this with the guys aboard the ship, my plane, it's a C-130, and I had written five copies, they wanted copies, and I wrote them on my orders. So I had to get a copy of their words, and I had to rewrite everything. And this is the prayer, a service prayer. As darkness fell at Sibik Bay, we got the order, ship out. All of us ran and packed, and we all knew what must be done. We are now aboard a cargo plane bound for Vietnam, with silent prayers and gallant stares that lift the ground so warm. It's unknown to us what hell we might be facing as nighttime changes today. We are here, yes, we are here, the children of the future of the USA. I create the teens and jungle roots to combat the communist plan of taking control of South Vietnam. We, the men of support demand, are just a bunch of kids, for we don't know if we can take the life. I guess that's the way life is. With the Lord by our side, we will fight and die. Our hopes are that what we do will live on in the eyes of freedom. And because of my buddy at high school, he got me to do this kind of writing. And when I was in Vietnam, I was told I was a courier. And I said, "What's a courier?" And they said, "You carry documents and things to other bases throughout the country." And I was in ICOR, which is a military in South Vietnam. And I said, "Okay." I said, "Show me the job." And they sent me to the base called Camp Ten Shaw, and went to the dispersing department. And my buddy Ed was there, and he said, "I want you to meet my commander, M.N. Johnson." So I did, and then I said, "Do you have Navy time?" I said, "Sure do." He said, "Have you ever been on a ship?" I said, "Sure have." He said, "You're the man I want." I said, "To do what?" He said, "I need you to deliver money." I said, "What?" I need you to deliver money to all the bases within ICOR and documents. And, you know, I'm thinking thirty, forty, a hundred fifty, six hundred dollars, something like that. I'm delivering a hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred thousand dollars in suitcase that I'm carrying. And at that time, that was a lot of money, and it was to help those bases handle their situations. And part of the money also was Vietnamese money, and what we call NPC, Military Pay Program. And, you know, man, I was shocked when I had to do this. First John wing when I need him. They also put me in charge of the weapons. I had six N-16s, six N-14s, six forty-five caliber pistols, and I think it was four .38 pistols. And when I would go, I'd carry a pistol and a rifle, and I would just go. And he would say, my commander would say, "Okay, take this bag and this bag, go to the airport, and you're going to Wade or Phu Bon." I said, "Okay. What am I flying?" He said, "They'll tell you when you get there." And I'd go there, and all of a sudden, this officer said, "You're in the back, son." I said, "Excuse me?" He said, "Seaman, I outrank you, you're in the back." I said, "Excuse me, sir, but I'm a courier." And the person at the front said, "You got the next chopper that's coming right now. Get aboard, get out of here, and be safe." So I'd go get on the chopper and fly out, and a lot of times, the choppers were shot at. And, you know, I said, "Well, this is the life I chose. The Navy's put me here, and I'm going to do my best." And I got through, never lost a dime, never lost a dollar, and I never got shot. Thank God. Some of the times, I would be traveling in my truck, and all of a sudden, we'd see something, and I'd say, "Stop." And I didn't care about the money, I wanted to help the guys that were on the ground. I helped move body parts, I helped guys pick up their buddies and put them in helicopters and stuff. I mean, it was definitely a moving experience, but I got through, and my buddies got through. And the guys who passed away are here in my heart and on the wall, and I'll never forget that. And when I returned, when I returned home, my mom says, "Go to college." I said, "I ain't going to college, I'm not a college person." I was working ball thread sites in South Florida for Wacken Hut, and my mom said, "No, son, this is getting to you, you gotta change." I said, "What do you want me to do?" She said, "You better go to college." I said, "I can't go to college." She said, "Please, I beg of you." So I went to Broward Community College, got my associate's degree. I said, "I'm done." She said, "No, please, get your degree." Went to University of Florida, I got my bachelor's degree, and my buddy up there said, "Come and play golf with me in Disney World." I said, "What? Where are you going to?" He said, "Come to Disney World." I said, "Okay." Well, he brought two other guys, and one guy was the personnel chief for McCoy Air Force Base, and we're playing, and my buddy and I won all the rounds, the real rounds, and the guy from personnel said, "Are you looking for a job with the government?" I said, "What are you talking about?" He said, "Are you looking for a job with the government? What you're reading?" I said, "My degree's in Recreation Administration." He said, "I can get you a job if you want one." I just got out of college. I said, "Okay." I got me my first government job in Kidsville, Northern Michigan, and that was a blessing to me because I met a family called the Claxtons, and I was the youth director up there, and I would say, "Where's your dad?" "Oh, he's on a mission." I said, "You sure?" "Yeah, he's on a mission." So I said, "Okay." You know, and we did things, I was there for two and a half years, and just before I got some orders, I went up to the mother, and I said, "Where's your husband? I haven't seen him. I've been here two and a half years." She said, "He's MIA." I said, "What?" "He's been MIA since sixty-seven, his plane was shot down, and they haven't found him." And I said, "That is so heartbreaking." And I went, and I got his bracelet, and whenever I do any kind of gathering, I live in honor of him, and when I go to the wall, I take him, he's on the wall, Charles P. Claxton. And that really got to me. And in my government jobs, I've had some different jobs, and one of them was I was out here at the base in two thousand, and my boss made me the mortuary officer. He said, "I can't do that. I cannot move dead bodies and inspect them." He said, "You do it, or you lose your government benefits." I don't want the personnel, and I said, "You're sunk, you have to do it." I said, "You're kidding me." So for four years, I was the mortuary officer. I held a suicide victim for six hours up in Macon at the Heinz Funeral Home because they'd done autopsy on him, and I had to get him ready for his family viewing, and he was leaking fluids. And I held his head, and he had sutures everywhere. And after almost six hours, I said, "Guys, can I help? I mean, I'm holding the guy, can I help?" They said, "Sure, do whatever you want to, Bob." And I started using swabs, and about fifteen minutes later, he was fine. And I was so taken, and I went out, and I brought my buddy in, who I brought with me, and it took five of us, counting the doctors, to pick him up and dress him in his uniform. He weighed two hundred thirty-one pounds, and then we laid him in the casket, and I was just so taken by it, and I said to the funeral director, I said, "What about his lips?" He said, "You talking about this?" And he touched his lips, crumbled. That's where the gunshot went in. I said, "You're kidding me." And I started praying, and he said, "I can take care of this." He said, "I'm a Hollywood star." I said, "What are you talking about?" He said, "Just give me some time." We had about three hours left. And he cleaned him up, and he redone his whole face from the picture. And when the family saw him, they were so taken by the picture shot, they thanked me so much. I said, "You don't thank me, thank the gentleman over there. You know, I was just here to get the guy ready for him." And from that time on, it really got to me. And my buddy, who was a highly dedicated guy on that helicopter pilot, he said, "You're sick." I said, "No, I'm not." He said, "You're sick." I said, "No, I came back safe." He said, "You're sick." He said, "You have PTSD, post traumatic stress." I said, "No, I don't." He said, "No, you got it." And he gave me a card, which I carry on wallet, for a counselor down in Alabama, I went to see him, and he said, "I need you to take a test." I said, "Okay." Well, the first test was six hundred and some questions, and the second test was almost six hundred. Took me two days to do it, and when it was done, when I was done, he said, "You're sick, you need to go apply for benefits." I said, "I can't do that." He said, "Bob, believe me, you're sick, you need to go to the VA." I said, "Okay." Went to the VA, they turned me down eight times in five years. They said, "There's nothing wrong with you, you're an accountant, you just help count money." I said, "It didn't, that was part of my job, but that wasn't the total job." They said, "You don't believe me." So I said, "Okay, I'll have to try to get some evidence." I had a Vietnam Vet reunion in two thousand and five, went out to Branson, Missouri, there were a hundred and thirty-five of us, but only me, one guy, was there at the same time I was, and that was me. Everyone else was there a year or a year and a half before or after me. And I said, "I'm ending this right now." And behind the Radisson Inn, we had a traveling wall. I walked up to it, put my hands on it, and I said, "God, so I'm only going to leave here if you'll take me." And I just put my hands on the wall, I said, "It's time to end this." And I was there by myself, and all of a sudden, I heard, "Are you a Vietnam vet?" And I turned around, across this long, long parking lot was a lady in black. I said, "Yes." She said, "Wait for me, I'm coming to you, I'm coming to you." I said, "Okay, I'll wait." I put my hands on the wall, and she walked up to me, and she said, "Turn around." And I turned around, and the first thing she did was hug me. She said, "Welcome home, brother." She said, "I love you." And I just went almost nuts, and she said, "I got something for you." And I said, "What do you have for me?" She said, "This is called a Band-Aid for the Heart Pen." And she said, "I had this made in honor of all Vietnam vets, to honor them because I never felt loved until I met them and understood what they went through." And I said, "This is so touching." And I just, I started to weep, and two Marines walked up, and she went over and talked to them, and I just started bending down, and I looked up at the wall, and it looked like all my buddies were coming off the wall, saying, "Praise her, she's a true angel." And I was totally taken. And the next day, I spent the next day there, and I went over to her because she had a booth, and I said, "Here, look at these documents and these poems I wrote, and let me know what you think of them." She said, "Okay." A week later, she calls me on the phone, she says, "I've got a surprise coming for you." I said, "What? I have a surprise coming for you." I said, "Okay." Came in the mail, was a newspaper, and in it were two of my writings were printed. And she called my other phone, she said, "Did you get it?" And I said, "Yes." She said, "Can you write a book about your experience in Nebraska, I mean, out there at the wall?" And I said, "Sure, I can, I can write something." She said, "I want you to write about your life, and let me know how you feel." And I said, "Okay, I'll do the thing about Branson, Missouri, and I'll do it all." I sent her the one about Branson, called The Search, and about the Band-Aid for the Heart, and when she got it, she was so taken, she shared it, she's a minister, she shared it with her ministry, she said, "This is touching me so much." She said, "Can you write a book?" And I said, "Okay, I will." And I wrote a book, and it's called Reflections of the Life of a Vietnam Veteran. And I gave it to her, and she said, "You need to print this." And she hit print, and that was my first book. I've written eight, seven are printed now, the eighth one's being printed now, the eighth one's being printed now. And she uses them because she travels all over the United States, sharing love with the veterans, and helping them by sharing the books with them, saying, "Read some of this stuff because he's experienced the same thing you have, and he's doing so much better, and he's doing so much better because he's found the Lord, and that's really helped." She's given out over eighty thousand of these. I've given out over six thousand, and I have some here if anybody wants one, I have some here with me. But it's a ministry that has totally taken over the foundation of my life, and she gave this pen to a vendor lady in two thousand and eight, and says, "I just returned from Winter Park, Colorado, while it snowed, hailed, rained. I met a vendor lady last year and gave her a medal for her son. Yesterday, she said he was in Afghanistan, was the medal under his uniform. Got shot, it hit the medal, the medal made the bullet ricochet. He called mom and said the medal saved his life. Keep your God in the details." So when I go to places where I meet veterans, I pass these out, especially the young guys that are going overseas and stuff. And that's the foundation for my life right now.
Bob, we appreciate you being with us and sharing your story, a real life story with us this morning. And we also want to thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Particularly in the Vietnam era, we sometimes, as the nation may have forgot, but the men and women that served in that era of our nation are real heroes, and we appreciate you for what you have done, we appreciate you for residing in Houston County, and we appreciate you for being a great American. If you'll meet us around front, we're going to get a photograph with you next week.
I want to give you one, and then we'll send it to the House.
Yes.
Is this the lady?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Let's get a photograph, and then I'll tell you something about this. We've got to get this one right, because Ms. Thompson's here to make sure Mr. Thompson's here. On behalf of people in Houston County, we'd like to give you this placard, it says, "Thank you for your service to our country." It's got a county seal engraved on it. We don't think you'd ever have too many American flags. We also got an American flag, a pale pen we'd like to give you, and a county seal, a pale pen we'd like to give you as well. And thank you for this pen, it's very meaningful that you've given to each and everyone I was here this morning. And again, your words really run deep, not only with those I was sitting here, but I'm sure those are also in the audience, and thank you for your service. Let's give me my hand.
I appreciate the work you've done.
I knew a guy that did that, Charles Cook, his name, he had that one time, he said, "Charles did."
This time, we need to add two agenda items to the agenda today. Item number six, item number seven, we'll be able to add these items. Item number six is going to be Mayor Tombs is going to come up and have a presentation to talk to us about. That will be, again, number six. Item number seven, at the conclusion of the meeting, we'll take public comments, commissioners' comments, then we'll go into executive session to discuss personnel action. I do not anticipate any action coming from the executive session, but it will be in regards to personnel, and that will be item number seven. We're needing the motion to add both items to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt you for one second? Would you also add to that attorney-client?
Attorney-client along with personnel. Same item, though.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Thompson, they add item number six and number seven to the agenda, need a second to the motion.
I found an order also, Mr. Chairman, I'll move it second.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker, need a discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, motion carries. The minutes are official for February sixteenth. Going into new business, item number one on new business is personnel requests, Superior Court, Commissioner Robinson, you can present that one.
Yes, item number one, Judge Nunn has requested to hire Ms. Judy McConnell to temporarily fill in the intelligent defense coordinator position while Ms. Sheila Trailer is on a one-month medical leave of absence beginning March first. Staff recommends Ms. McConnell be paid at the ASAP for grade seventeen. It's my motion to approve the temporary hire of Ms. Judy McConnell.
then we'll go into executive session to discuss personnel action. I do not anticipate any action coming from the executive session, but it will be in regards to personnel and that will be item number seven. We're needing the motion to add both items to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt you for one second? Would you also add to that attorney-client?
Attorney-client along with personnel. Same item though.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Thompson, they add item number six and number seven to the agenda. Need a second to the motion.
I'll say, Mr. Chairman.
And a second by Commissioner Walker. Need a discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, so we'll have seven items instead of five items on the agenda today. At this time, we will approve the minutes from the February the 16th, 2016 meeting. I think the commissioners had an opportunity to review those minutes and if there's no corrections or additions, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I find an order makes most, the approval is written.
Got a motion by Commissioner Thompson, I mean, Commissioner Michael for approval. Need a second to the motion.
I find an order also, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to second.
And a second by Commissioner Walker. Need a discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Minutes official for February the 16th. Going into new business, item number one on new business is personnel requests. Superior Court Commissioner Robinson could present that one.
Um, yes, item number one, Judge Nun has requested to hire Ms. Judy McConnell to temporarily fill in the Indigent Defense Coordinator position while Ms. Sheila Trailer is on a one-month medical leave of absence beginning March 1st. Staff recommends Ms. McConnell be paid at the ASAP for grade seventeen. It's my motion to approve the temporary hire of Ms. Judy McConnell at grade seventeen A in the Superior Court Indigent Defense Coordinator position during Ms. Sheila Trailer's one-month absence beginning on March 1st, 2016.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Robinson, need a second to the motion.
I'll say.
And a second by Commissioner Thompson, need a discussion on the motion. Uh, Ms. Collins, Ms. McConnell, she will be notified in writing under link.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, we would accept.
Any other questions, comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda, and we will batch all of these applications, these special exception applications that were proposed today. Mr. Andrews will go through each and every one of the applications at which time we'll have a public hearing on all of them as a batch. At conclusion, we will close the meeting, or reconvene the meeting, I should say, and then we'll vote on these items either in whole or separate, whichever we need to do. And at this time, Mr. Andrews, before you present these particular applications to us, I'm gonna call on Mr. Hall, the county attorney, to advise all the applicants covenants is what they actually mean to the local governments and what they mean to the homeowners. And before he does that, those of you that have these applications, Mr. Andrews will tell you at the conclusion of his presentation what the next steps are. If your application is approved, he will tell you that as well. Mr. Hall, if you'd advise them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If your property is, if you're here for a home occupation and your property is in a subdivision that has restricted covenants, any action that this board takes will not take away those restricted covenants. So if you have in those covenants some sort of provision that prohibits any sort of business activity, then if they approve the home occupation, that doesn't take away the right of the homeowners association or any neighbors in the subdivision to file any action against you supporting those covenants saying, "No business activity in the subdivision." So any action they take today will not negate or take away the restricted covenants on subdivisions. You may be looking.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Andrews, go ahead and please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to this board's meeting, you've been provided copies of the applicants, the applications, along with all supporting documentation that was made a part of the record for the filing of these special exceptions. On February the 22nd, 2016, the Houston County Board of Zoning Appeals has met. And at that meeting, they renewed each application along with their compliance with Section 95 of the Conference of Landowners Regulation. Thus, you can find yourself that hearing along with recommendations. Application number nineteen thirty-eight for Latasha Evans, property located at 405 Tanner Street. Ms. Evans is requesting a special exception for a home occupation. Her home occupation will be a T-shirt and craft business. Should be engaging in screen printing. The sale of the products will be done by way of the internet. She'll have some special deliveries at times coming to her home, but most of our products will be purchased and brought to the home. The screen printing will be done in her home. Recommendation of the Houston County Zoning Appeals Board was to recommend this morning unanimously to approve application number nineteen thirty-eight. Application number nineteen thirty-nine for Terry Wilson, property located at 701 Gateway Drive. Ms. Wilson has requested a special exception for a home occupation. Her home occupation will be a talent agent. Her home will be used as an office only. She'll be engaging in providing support to individuals attempting to get into or provide employment in the moving vehicle business. She'll be designing an internet, internet site in order to make connections between her clients and the moving vehicle industry. This application comes to you with a unanimous recommendation this morning for approval for the zoning appeal. Application number nineteen forty for Amy Bright, property located at 91 Sweet Grade A Road. Ms. Bright is requesting a special exception for a home occupation for a monogramming sewing business. Again, the nature of the business will involve monogramming of specialty items, examples, bags, towels, cleaning, things of that nature. Most of our businesses we conduct, conduct it over the internet. However, she will occasionally have entertained customers coming to her home for specialty items. This item comes to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Zoning Appeals Board. Application number nineteen forty-one for Katie Mun, property located at 104 Tanner Street. Ms. Mun is requesting a special exception for a home occupation for a landscaping business. Again, Ms. Mun stated that business, of course, involved providing lawn care for local residents. His home will be used as an office only. All his equipment and material will be stored at an off-site location. Stated at hearing, if he stores it, probably has many storage. He will have some associates helping him with his service, however, they will not come to the home. They will only meet him at the site of the customer. This item comes to you with a recommendation unanimously for approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Application number nineteen forty-two for Robert E. Perry, property located at 300 Jodico Road. Ms. Perry requesting a special exception for courier business. At the hearing, he stated that the nature of his business is providing medical, drug courier services from local drug stores to nursing homes and healthcare facilities. His home will only be used as an office only, no clients, so anyone will not come to his home. Recommendation of the Zoning Appeals Board was to approve this request unanimously. Application number nineteen forty-four, I'm sorry, yeah, nineteen forty-four for Jerry Bryan, property located at 110 Carver Ridge Drive. Ms. Bryan is requesting a special exception for internet sales business. This internet sales business will assess firearms and firearm components. He said, "His home will be used primarily as a business office. His sales will be conducted by the internet. These items will be drop shipped to the individuals at their parts. If they're firearm, they'll be compliant with AFD requirements." AFD, firearms requirements. He said that per, per occasion, he will have the customer come to his home if they were to highly specialty like product that he will be providing. However, that will be on a limited basis. The Houston County Zoning Appeals Board recommends unanimously to approve application number nineteen forty-four for Jerry Bryan. Application number nineteen forty-six for Shanta Valley, property located at 107 Green Memorial Drive. Ms. Valley is requesting a special exception for a dessert making business. Again, at the hearing, he stated that she'll be providing homemade desserts for specialty events, example, baby showers, birthdays, things of that nature. She'll be taking her orders online by phone. She is aware of the state requirements for cottage business compliance with Department of State Department of Agriculture. The Houston County Board of Zoning Appeals recommends unanimously to approve application number nineteen forty-two for Ms. Valley. Application number nineteen forty-seven for Alicia T. Harris, property located at 108 Chamberlain Drive. Ms. Harris, of course, is special exception for a home occupation. Her home occupation will be a miller. At the hearing, Ms. Harris stated the miller is a producer of hats. She said that the hats will consist of materials made of straw, of leather, things of that nature. She'll be offering her products at special events and online and for the guys she will be doing the maneuvers. Houston County Board of Zoning Appeals recommends unanimously this morning approve of application number nineteen forty-seven for Alicia T. Harris operating this business at her home as a mill that gives her a great opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Your holding position for just a moment, please. I'm gonna ask commissioners if they got any questions on any of these applications for you. Commissioner Michael, do you have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
No, sir.
Robinson?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Walker?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. May be seated. At this time, at this time, we will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on these particular applications. I'm gonna call out the application number. If the act, or anyone here is in favor of the application, you just raise your hand. There's no need to add anything to Mr. Andrews' comments unless you feel it's necessary for any additional information that the board may need for their considerations on acting on these particular applications. Application number nineteen thirty-eight, Evans. Would you like to add anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Application number nineteen thirty-nine, Wilson. Would you like to add anything? Application number nineteen forty, Bright. Would you like to add anything?
No, sir.
Application number nineteen forty-one, Mun.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Application number nineteen forty-two, Perry. Would you like to add anything? Application number nineteen forty-four, Bryan. Would you like to add anything?
No.
Application number nineteen forty-six, Valley. Would you like to add anything? Application number nineteen forty-seven, Harris. Would you like to add anything?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, if there's anyone in opposition to any of these applications, raise your hand. Anyone in opposition to these applications? I see none, I hear none, therefore, the party here is now closed, the regular meeting is reconvened. Mr. Andrews, if you would come forward, uh, before, before, hold on, Mr. Andrews, and let's go ahead and vote, and then you tell all the applicants what they need to do, okay? I'm gonna turn to Commissioner Michael for disposition of these applications.
Mr. Chairman, following applications meet all the requirements to include any and all stipulations as noted in the zoning and appeals recommendation and Section 95 requirements. My motion is, all of them be approved as submitted, please, sir.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Michael, need a second to the motion.
One second.
And a second by Commissioner Ross. Need a discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Andrews, if you can inform the applicant of what they need to do next.
Okay, and in coming days, the technical center will copy of the findings of this process this morning for your records. However, later on this afternoon or tomorrow, the occupational license office located in the commissioners' office will be made aware of the approval of your license when you make an occupation at that time. Again, later on this afternoon and surely tomorrow, once that information is communicated to the license office. And sometime between now and Friday, I'll be out to give up signs, I'll be out.
That's all they got.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Also, to all the applicants on behalf of the board, we wish you best of luck in your business. Good luck to you and hopefully that you'll always successful for many, many years to come. Thank you, you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave, whatever you want to do. We got my three wives and we'll be wrapping up the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. At this time, we'll go to item number three on the agenda with an abandonment of easement. Commissioner Walker, you present that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Justin Icard has requested abandonment of one half of the right-of-way of Wilson Avenue in Barnair directly behind his business. A little history, Wilson Drive was never opened, it's modded used as a right-of-way anyway. The portion of the right-of-way was requested by Mr. Icard, will be used to store equipment and the abandonment will allow him to fence in the area to secure his equipment. Mr. Chairman, I would move to abandon the portion of Wilson Drive, as follows, all that tract of parcel of land situated lining being in Land Lot 21 of Level Plan District of Houston County, owed to being on the Easterly one half of the right-of-way of Wilson Avenue in Barnair. That record of Wesley, Lot 100, Lot 9 of Barnair, according to a plan of survey of the town of Barnair is D-Book W. H. 521, First Office of Houston Superior Court. The said flat and record thereof are incorporated herein by reference for all purposes. If approved, it would authorize the chairman to sign the deed over to Mr. Icard. I don't think there's any objection in where a lot of this rich run together out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker, need a second to the motion.
I'll say that, Mr. Chairman.
As said by Commissioner Michael, and all the appropriate county departments have signed off and there's a signal of conflict in the abandonment of easement.
And it's certainly not needed by the county.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number four on the agenda is a professional services contract. Commissioner Thompson, if you would present that one.
Fluorino drive is in much need of the draining engineering plan and implementation before restructuring. The engineering department is requesting approval to enter into a professional services contract on the fluorino drive storm drain improvements project with Wallowing Company for sixty-five hundred dollars. Scope of the work encompassed survey and design for the project to include a topographic survey and development plans with erosion control. Not to be confused with fluorino road in the south end of the county, this is North of Watson and south of Green Street. And my motion is approved, chairman of the state to resign a professional service agreement with Wallowing Company at One Robbins to provide survey and design documents for the fluorino drive storm drainage improvements project for a total fee of sixty-five hundred since 2012. Splotched, and I'd like to add that Robbie and I have been up several times looking at that and this really is, right, is nightmare. I think it's really a good thing to go ahead and do some storm drain before we try to restructure that, so that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Thompson, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it, Commissioner.
And a second by Commissioner Robinson. As all I've noticed at this paper, this, this is needed to be done for a long time. It is good that we're able to get around to finally doing it. The streets are definitely of some improvements as well as drainage in that area. So hopefully this is kind of the beginning of trying to rectify the situation despite three streets in the area that really are in dire need of some improvements. Any other comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of raising your right hand, motion carries. Item number five on the agenda will be the payment of the bill. Commissioner Michael will give the present of.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I very carefully examined all the bills to be paid this time. The breakdown is as follows, with general fund, a million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Emergency 911 telephone fund, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Fire department, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Inside, a good bit of that money was spent on the new, two new fire trucks that are on hand right now. Two thousand and one splotched, as for additional equipment for them. Twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Two thousand and six splotched, a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine twenty-nine dot six eight. The two thousand and twelve splotched, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. The water department, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight forty-nine dot nineteen. And the solid waste, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents for a total amount of two million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. My motion is, Mr. Chairman, we pay the bills.
Got a motion for approval of all bills, need a second to the motion. I'll say, and a second by Commissioner Walker, need a second to the bills. If not, all those in favor of paying, raise your right hand, motion carries. The next item that we would get in the hand to the agenda is Mayor Tombs. Mayor Tombs, if you'd come on up and let me get a little, please, introduction. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Tombs and I had a discussion last week. And I think particularly Mayor Tombs and some of the council has been somewhat single-valued as, as, as being problematic and all, and I'm here to tell you this morning, and that is the furthest thing from the truth. And that's the reason he's here today. There's an issue in my air that these sewer capacities from City of One Robbins, City of One Robbins is a Houston candidate that's been in sync in this process throughout it. And they have been accused of being somewhat resistant to development in this area. And that is the furthest thing from the truth. I believe there is resolution to this situation for potential of a grocery store or shopping center in that area. But Mayor, I want to personally tell you that there is no conflict with One Robbins. There is no conflict between One Robbins and Houston County. Unfortunately, those people would like to get on Twitter and Facebook and you want to name all those of them. You know, and they can hide behind all that stuff, which in fact, they don't even know what we're talking about. And it's somewhat certain that people will do that in the first place because we're gonna... somewhat certain that people will do that in the first place, because we not only got good things going between One Robbins and Houston County, and that area, but many other projects that we've thrown out there in just minutes, but I want you to know that if that is not true, I know what's not true, and I want to publicly tell you that I know what's not true, that if y'all are partners, that if every city in this county is partners, that's the reason we progress as well as we do in this county is because of relationship between the cities and the county, and those people that continue to spread those lies and rumors, uh, they should be ashamed of it except for doing that.
Yes, sir, I just want to say too, that I appreciate the opportunity to hear your comments and also to add mine, and that is not only on this project, but every project that I've been involved in, that involves the city and the county, we've been involved with them, you and I both, and you have brought great insight to me as a new mayor, that's kinda getting old though. There's a couple of years, things are going well, but one of the reasons why things are going well in One Robbins right now is because of the partnership that I personally have with you as chairman of the county commissioners, also all of the county commissioners, and have always been over backwards to try to partner with each city, but it's from my perspective, with One Robbins, to see growth in our whole county and each one of our cities, and I'm excited about what the future holds in this project, but as you also stated, in any project to come, I think we're working together so well. I personally think that we're the envy, from everything I've heard over the last two years, we in Houston County, the three cities that make up Houston County, are the envy of how it should work in government throughout the state, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with each one of you and with the county as a whole on getting projects done and seeing growth in our county and in our cities. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here, I am excited, and I do think we have a city council that is on board to see growth in all areas, and when we can participate in partnership with each other, that makes it even better. You know, some things happen overnight, some things don't, and I'm often asked, what am I most disappointed in, in the job I've had for the last two years? The only answer I have, really, is that government by nature moves slower than I'm used to, and I'm used to fighting fire, and fighting fire moves rather quickly, so just the nature of the beast is it moves slower, but because of the leadership that each one of you provide for our county and for the cities, the partnership we have for the cities in Houston County, that it makes it move faster, and it makes, even when it does move slower, more easy to tolerate. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I look forward to the future.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate what I said, I appreciate the relationship, not only the city of One Robbins, the cities as well, and you're right, because we do get along, we don't always agree, but we can agree, this really, and we move on, and that's the thing about us, but I appreciate our relationship, and I appreciate, on this particular project and other projects that are out there, the vision for all of us, whatever is good for the One Office is good for all of us, and I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate your friendship.
Yes, sir.
Likewise. Mayor, you got anything? I mean, Mayor, oh.
Just a quick comment, Mayor. No, just a quick comment. Mayor, we appreciate the relationship that we have with One Robbins, Centralville, and Perry, and the Board of Education. I think this is a textbook example of how local government should work, and anybody who wants to study how government should work and succeed, look at Houston County and its cities and its schools. Thank you, sir, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
And friendship.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, thank you for being a partner with Houston County and with all the entities of Houston County, and we appreciate it, we appreciate you coming down here to talk to us and your leadership.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Thompson?
Mayor, I've been a part of this county on this commission since 1983, and I'm sure you have not always been this way, so this is a runaround time between the county and the cities, and that has to do with chairman and you, and the new council and this commission, and the people that are writing that stuff on Twitter and all that, I'm pretty sure chairman should be ashamed of himself, but this is really a great time to be a politician in Houston County, and I appreciate you a lot.
Commissioner Mike?
I want to echo just exactly what the chairman said, that's exactly, I think that's the way all of us feel about the situation we have with all the cities on it. Cooperation between the cities and the county, I don't think has ever been even as good as it has been, it's been good, but not as good as it is right now, and I think that we have a typical example of reasonable people making reasonable decisions in benefit of a hundred and fifty thousand people that live in this whole community. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your friendship also, I appreciate you many times, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I will end by saying, we was talking about some of these other projects that got on the panel the other day, and I looked at it, and I said, well, I don't guess we need to be talking about these projects if we're in conflict, and, uh, and kind of, but it's amazing what goes on behind the scenes of corporation law, and then when you get a group of people to get out there and act like you're not cooperating, it just, it's hard to get genuine back in the box, but that is totally not true, and that's the reason you're here today, and that's what we wanted to make the point, uh, any of that information that's floating around is totally erroneous, and, uh, again, they'll be ashamed of it.
And I say yes, success is the best form of revenge, and so, rather than try to answer some of the things that have been floating out there, we're gonna just join together and succeed, and that's what we're gonna come out on topic, so thank y'all for your leadership, very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, this time, we're gonna go to public comments, and I'm gonna begin on my left-hand side room, which is the right-hand side of the room. Does anybody need to say anything to the commissioners today? Anybody on my left-hand side, right-hand side room where you're sitting? Does anybody on my right-hand side room, which is the left-hand side room where you're sitting? Anybody like to say something? Mr. Wood, if you please, come forward.
Chairman, I'm gonna do something I've never done before, and that's comment publicly on, I guess, state or some. I met Bob before the meeting, and I told him about that twenty-five years ago, maybe. I have listened for, what, four years, five years, various experiences from a veteran, and I thought, since I was the first guy that did it, I thought I had a pretty significant career, but it fails in comparison to what that man has done. I can tell you that there are three names of that Bob that are perfect, my son, Larry and I, we were students, another, Lloyd Weems, and what he did for that family that he was talking about is tremendously significant. I had the pleasure or displeasure or unfortunate experience of escorting a body home to New York, I was in there about three years, and I was forty-five, something like that. It was an accident at one time over at Cuba, uh, part of some people who got drunk and didn't care, and it ended up with a pow. That young man, didn't even look like a person, wanted to get it over with. Maybe flash burned, biggest thing of them. I'm in New York. Back to the table. We got to New York, and I met that man's family, to see the look of ratification on their face this summer, I'll never forget it, to hear Bob's story that he has carried on his assistance to better, meaning a lot, to this whole world right here.
And I'm sure it means a lot, and they're better than you.
So, from one old softy sale.
Please, sir. Appreciate it. This time, I'm gonna turn to commissioners, see if you've got any morals that you need to make before we go into executive session, I'm gonna begin with Commissioner Michael.
I want to say, Mr. Chairman, if you haven't voted, please go vote, sir. Thank you, appreciate you doing, exercise your waxes, American.
Commissioner Thompson?
Bob, I want, I know it's never said enough, to thank you, Union Brothers, and our brother for your service.
Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, thank you so much, and I know I went down, but I want to, I was the first in the headquarter of the county, uh, the headquarter of the county, and we called on our, you can help me, I'm very glad to know.
Thank you for your service, thank you for coming here today, thank all the veterans for their service, and thank you for providing the information and pictures, also, your story, your speech today was very amusing, we appreciate you coming, and I think a lot of people always learn something about, you know, how the human spirit survives, so we appreciate you being here today.
The only thing that I've got, and ended in a light part of note, is, uh, we've got a birthday coming up this month with one of our commissioners, and we always liked to acknowledge and commemorate birthday, and, uh, she was not available to attend a meeting this morning, and so we did bring a gift to her, and, uh, we'd like to present it to Commissioner Robinson, I believe your birthday is on March 24th, I'm stating the date correct.
That is correct, yes.
And that birthday, and, uh, this is really a nice mug now, and she can have a morning coffee out of, when she gets to work, or either portion of the song, with some blue mug, canister on, we'd like to give you this for your birthday, your 25th birthday.
Yeah.
In saying that, I want to turn for a motion to go into the executive session.
Some of the commissioners go into executive session.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Michael, second by Commissioner Thompson, and that is for attorney-client personnel actions, uh, at the corner of the executive session. All those who play with that, raise your right hand, motion carries. This time, the meeting is recessed while we're in the executive session. Thank y'all for coming today.